Okay, it's 7:30 on our phones. On top of our computers. It's the February 1th Brainerd City Council meeting at 7:30. We'll call the meeting to order and ask for the administrator to call the roll.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number four, approval of the agenda. Is there anybody who has any corrections they want to make to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Gabe Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item number five is the consent calendar. All matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to approve?
So move. Second.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Stunek. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The administrator Bergman, we call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes. Item number six is presentation. Six A is Community Development Department. End of 2020, beginning of 2021 presentation by Community Development Director David Chanson.
Thank you, Mr. President. As become my habit since coming to the city, I like to present, make a presentation to the city council at the beginning of the year and roughly the midpoint of the year, just giving you an update on what the Community Development Department is doing and what's going on in our community. Sean, you go to the next slide, please. So as usual, just quick again, just a reminder who we are and what we do. Again, I'm the Community Development Director. My team is made up of Darren D. Seth, who's our building official, Jason Stockinger, who's our building inspector, James Cromvik, our newly appointed assistant planner, and then our permit technician position is vacant, but we do have an item later on our agenda to hopefully get authorization from the council to fill that position. What do we do? We do planning and zoning, building inspections, co-compliance, rental housing, implementing the rental housing program, and then assisting with economic development. Thank you, Sean. So it's breaking it down to each of our operational areas. So for planning and zoning, looking at some of our 2020 activities, you'll see we had five conditional use permits, two rezoning requests, and one variance request. Again, these were the requests. One rezoning was denied and a one-three ordinance text amendments. In 2020 was the year of the fence. We processed 81 fence permits. Just a little context, in 2019, we had 54 fence permits. It's a 50% increase, and I think in 2018, it was something like 35. So last year was the year of the fence, where everyone was home and they realized they wanted some separation from the neighbors, who were also home. During 2020, again, we had, like everyone else, we dealt with the COVID-19 pandemic. As part of that, worked with the city council to enact the temporary extension of premise. This was again when restaurants were shut down for everything except outdoor dining. Worked with the city council to relax some of the regulations to allow outdoor dining with a little less regulations in certain areas, sometimes even in the right of way in certain areas. There were six approved temporary extension of premises permits given before things kind of opened up again, and I think people stopped kind of pursuing that option as they had some indoor. Little bit of update on the Mississippi Riverfront. Back in April of 2020, the city council authorized staff to submit a request to the LCCMR. It's Legislative Citizen Commission of Minnesota Resources for a request of $3.8 million of the Environmental Natural Resource Trust Fund to develop the Mississippi Landing Trailhead, or MLT. In August, we went through the review process, and in August, the LCCMR commission voted to recommend $2.85 million of Environmental Natural Resource Trust Fund monies to help build the Mississippi Landing Trailhead. Where we are now, House filing 151 is the bill that has been filed to consider and adopt the recommendations by LCCMR for the roughly $70 million of trust fund money to be spent on projects. That is being considered by the Housing, Environmental, and Natural Resource Finance and Policy Committee tomorrow at 1:00 PM. From there, if it passes, the committee will go on to the House and the Senate for approval. Hopefully, looking for approval by the end of the month. At that point, once approved, that $2.85 million will become available for use starting on July 1st. So exciting year ahead comes the Mississippi Landing Trailhead. Kind of what are the next steps? We'll be engaging the park board as this will be, end up being a city park. The park board's going to be heavily involved in this process, and we're going to start just looking at the planning and moving forward. What I see for 2021, this is really the planning and design for the park doing. You know, we have a concept design. We have a preliminary cost estimate. Now we'll be going into the actual final design and engineering, and I see where most of the work, the actual shovels in the groundwork, being completed in 2022. Also, in October, the city, or I think it was actually the end of September, the city council authorized signing on with the Swanson-Hass Camp consulting team to guide us through a zoning code update. We are in phase one of that process. There's actually a conceptual planning workshop with the, between the Swanson-Hass Camp team and the Planning Commission this Wednesday at 5:30 here in the council chambers. We're kind of getting wrapping up, starting to wrap up phase one, and then phase two will move into the actual code language, rewriting code language. Goal for that is to have that completed and adopted by the end of this year. The vacant parcel map, I kept that on there. That's been, you've seen in previous years. In 2019, I had our planning intern at that time working on that project, and we got one draft of it up. In 2020, I was working with our GIS intern to kind of beef that up. There's still some kinks we're trying to to work out specifically how we get GIS to grab all the vacant parcels. Sometimes it's grabbing parcels that really aren't, and I'm trying to focus on buildable parcels. Either parcels are not buildable, sometimes actual buildable parcels are being left out. So we're still kind of working the kinks out on the vacant parcel map. But there is a vacant parcel map available on the city's website under the Community Development page. And then, just like the Finance Administration Department, we started implementing the BSNA software this past spring. I think that implementation has gone well, and we just continue to fine tune that. The process, kind of a fine tuning, that system kind of goes on on a daily basis. But the staff is really liking it. It has definitely streamlined a lot of our functions. And then in April, we intend on going to the paperless permitting. So all their permitting will be done online through our online portal. For 2021, you see, we, you know, the city council added the, approved the assistant planner position. I'm really looking forward to that, working with James and being able to beef up our planning operations. We're looking at completing zoning code, beginning the development of the Mississippi Landing Trailhead, and then continuing the implementation of the comprehensive plan that was adopted in October of 2019. Just a little bit about that, just an update. One of the things the council has been, the Planning Commission has been working on, which was their kind of first course of action after implementation of the comp plan, was updating the future land use map. They have approved a draft of that, and that is out now for review by the county and neighboring municipalities for their review per state statute. The Planning Commission tentatively has a public hearing on the future land use map, which involves incorporating it into the comprehensive plan, which is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. They tentatively have a public hearing for that scheduled during their regular meeting in April, which would be April 21st, and then it would come before the council for formal approval of amending the comprehensive plan to include the future land use map. Sean, next, please. Thank you. On the building side, on the left side, you'll see 2019, and then on the right side is 2020 for comparison. You'll see in 2020, we did about 200 less building permits than 2019. That really can be accounted for, accredited to COVID. While residential did pretty proceed pretty steadily, and I'll talk about that a little bit. We did see a little bit of a flutter on the commercial side. It's a lot, I think, a lot of commercial projects gone, took a pause to see how COVID was going to happen and if they were going to still need to do their projects. We have a total project valuation in 2020 of $47,288,369. I went in there, if you exclude the ISD 181 projects that were permitted in 2020, that's Lowell Elementary, Garfield Elementary, and Riverside Elementary, comes down to $21,181,459. The reason I include that in there is just want to keep the council in perspective. For once those projects are no longer being permitted, you'll see that valuation drop. And so I just want to keep that idea of what the impact of the schools are on their total project valuation, especially since those projects don't really touch the tax rolls. Our staff completed roughly 3,516 inspections in 2020. That's across building, code, and housing inspections. Housing inspections in 2020 were quite down because we did take a pause during the work from home time period. When we gave them back to the summer, we started to resume housing inspections. However, if there was concern from a tenant about COVID, we just pushed back and rescheduled inspections. And so that's kind of, and then when we went back to work from home in November, we paused housing inspection, rental housing inspections again. So we're a little behind on the housing inspections, but we're doing them as we can. Residential, we had 42 new constructions in residential new construction in 2020. My staff, as they were looking through historical data, it appears that that 42 is the highest number of new constructions in a single year in at least 20 years, going back to through our previous permit record, permit software beyond that, everything was hard copy. But from everything we can tell, that is the most new constructions the city of Brainerd has seen in at least the last two decades. You see one commercial new construction, that's Starbucks off of Washington. 35 new remodels, 20 institution government remodels. And then you can see just some of the residential siding, roofing, and windows, kind of maintaining even through COVID. Code compliance, again, you can see 2019 on the left, 2020 on the right. You'll see it's about a 50% decrease from 2020 to 2019. That's because during 2020, as staff recommended to the city council, we took a complaint-driven process to code enforcement only. In July of 2020, I did come before the council requesting permission to be more proactive when it came to tall grass weeds and junk and debris because it was getting quite bad. But everything else was complaint-driven only, and continues to be complaint-driven only. We had 110 citations that were issued. We voided 39 of those citations for compliance, and we occurred about a 90% compliance rate. So it's been stayed in the last three years. It has stayed roughly in the 90% rate. And our goal, ultimate goal is always compliance. So whenever we can, we try to avoid citations, and we can, if we get immediate compliance and the residents reach out to us, we do our best to avoid those citations when we can. So ultimately, our goal is always compliance. Speaking of code compliance for 2021, what our intention would like to be is to return to a more proactive level of code enforcement. In 2020, we essentially did no property maintenance enforcement because COVID hit in March. I think we made that recommendation to the city council to go to complaint-driven about mid-March. And prior to that, in the winter, we don't do a lot of property maintenance enforcement unless it's an already ongoing enforcement process. We don't start anything new. So we really didn't know property maintenance enforcement. Unfortunately, in certain areas, I think it is noticeable. So we'd like to restart on the, especially on the property maintenance enforcement. And just one other thing to note is that when we were going through the comprehensive plan update process in 2018 and 2019, actually began in 2017, one of the things that was heard loud and clear from the community was a request for increased code enforcement. So I think there is a desire from the, from the community for code enforcement and for codes to be enforced and enforced kind of across, across the board evenly. And that's what we aim to do, is never to really pick on any one person or any one area. If we get complaints, we address them, and as our staff is out and about, if we see issues that are against the code, we let the residents know that there's an issue, and we work with them. Our goal is always to work with residents in achieving compliance because that is our goal, compliance, not citations. We would prefer compliance and hopefully one day not even have a need for code compliance. Sean, next slide, please. Thank you. This is just a quick update on the rental housing. On the right side, you can see it's essentially a map. This one, the map's a little older, but it gives you a good idea of where the rentals are across our community. There's some dots, red dots are single-family, blue are multifamily, the green are duplexes. So multifamily is anything more than two. And you can see they're pretty evenly spread throughout the community. We have roughly 2,586 rental units. It's spread across 1,033 structures. You can see the breakdown there. Majority of them, about 60% of those structure, of those units. 60%? I didn't get that right. We have roughly 665 single-family units. 665 structures because they're single-family. 358 two-family units. That's over 179 structures. Then you have 183 structures making up 1,563 units across the city. Again, we do, we generally do inspections across a three-year cycle. One reason we do it over the three-year cycle is just because of the number of units that have to be inspected. You know, doing 20, almost 2,600 units, of course, the three years keeps, still keeps my staff pretty busy. It is an annual permit of $32 per unit. The permits run June 1st to May 31st. However, in 2020, we did make the recommendation to council, and the council agreed to extend the deadline for rental licenses from May 31st to July 31st in 2020. Next slide, Sean. Little bit on economic development. River to Rail Initiative, this was adopted by the city council on July 1st of 2019. In 2019, from July 1st to December 31st, we had 55 permits pulled with a project valuation of approximately $708,353, and we waived $33,439.24 in fees. I want to go back to the project valuation real quick. This is based off of the valuation. Most of our permits are based off of valuation. So there's a, there is a formula that says, okay, the project's going to be this much based off the formula. Here's your fee. But not every permit is based that way. Some permits, like a mechanical permit for a water heater, it's a flat fee. So we don't collect the valuation. So in each one of these, the valuation is arguably higher. This is just based off the valuation we did collect. 2020, we issued 94 permits in the River to Rail corridor with approximately $2.8 million in project valuation and a further $27,490.96 waived in fees. I did, Alderman Johnson did request from my staff if we could have some more historical data to see, is this actually working? My staff is currently working on that. Unfortunately, with how we tracked things, we weren't really tracking the River to Rail corridor, obviously, before July 1st of 2019. We have to go back. We have a master list of all the parcels within the River to Rail corridor, and we have to potentially go back through by hand and look at them all and figure out, did they have permits? Did they pull permits in the past? And we're going all the way back to 2017. My staff is through 2017. They're working in 2018 as they're right now. And then after 2018, they'd have to do 2019, January 1st to July 1st. So our goal is to, we're slowly working through that as we have time. And at the minimum, I hope, is to have, I would have that historical data to you when we do my mid-year report in about July. On the economic development, working with the Economic Development Authority, the EDA in 2020 championed the Small Business Relief Grant, and they sought money from the city council about $113,000 in total to fund 42 small business relief grants at roughly $3,000 each to help out our businesses. That was in May before, you know, the COVID funds came in. They've also been active in trying to market the industrial park property. They came before the city council in 2019 to agree to a policy to sell the the property at a dollar an acre as a business subsidy dependent on the project. There was one entity that was interested in buying the property and was pursuing the property. That's Anderson Brothers Construction. However, in December, they notified the city that they were going to, and the EDA, that they were no longer going to be pursuing the industrial park property as they worked out an agreement to purchase the property that they are currently located at. So they still are staying in the city of Brainerd. They still intend to bring more of their operations into the city. They've got three other outside sites now that they're going to be bringing the staff from those sites into the Brainerd location, and they're going to be doing some improvements to their site. They actually have a conditional use permit. They'll be going before the Planning Commission this month. We'll come before the council in March for their new maintenance building. They have to get a conditional use permit due to the height of the building. But they'll be doing that this summer, as well doing some other improvements on their site. And then looking at into 2022, maybe doing some improvements to their office site. 2021, Economic Development Authority, they've identified doing some strategic planning. We're working on that with them now. And then they also created an economic incentives line item as part of their budget. So I'll be excited to work with the EDA on figuring out the best way to use those funds to improve the economic vitality of our community. And then just three other things that we have going on. The Parking Commission, which was revived by the city council in July of 2020. Took a little bit to get the commission put together, but we finally got all the members of the commission together. They held their kickoff meeting in December, met last month as well. And they actually have a workshop scheduled for this Thursday at 4 o'clock in the fire hall to kind of do a whiteboard workshop on, they've identified seven different areas of parking concerns that they believe need to address, and they're going to use that time to kind of dive into each one of those areas and figure out what needs to be addressed in the months ahead. Continue to do our work with the Walkable Bicable City Committee. They're at the kind of a point right now, they're learning, they're trying, they're, really figuring out what the next step is for them. They've been working on a shovel brigade project. They did get a grant, I think it was 2019, to get some shovels, which we have, and they've been working on putting together this program to encourage neighborhood shovel brigades to help shoveling sidewalks for those who are otherwise unable to do so, so we can ensure that our sidewalks remain clear as they are a vital port of transportation for many of our residents. And then prior to the, I was working with Region 5 Children's Museum while they were pursuing the Lum Park site before it was determined that was not going to be a viable site for both the city and the museum. Well, with that, I will take any questions that the council has.
Any questions for, yes, Gabe.
Thank you, Kelly. I have one question. Goes back to working on the Trailhead Park. Is the, is the Community Development Department working closely with the park board and with the now Public Works Department on this project? Because I imagine when it's done, it's going to be the responsibility of the park board to maintain.
Correct. So I am going to be the project manager of this project. However, I'll be working very closely with the Public Works Department and the park board. And actually, that's, once we actually get, I've been waiting for the legislature to formally approve the money because it's only in concept until they do that. And then once that done, the first step will be to engage the park board. The park board has been a supporter of this project all the way through. And so the next step would be to engage the park board and begin that, that planning and design process.
Thank you. Any other questions for Community Development Director Chanson? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing how things go in the next six months.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next up is item seven, our council committee reports. Item 7A is Personal Finance Committee. Chairman Gabe Johnson, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Bevins. We have five items. The first item on the agenda is the authorization to donate old fire department equipment. And the motion is to authorize chief homes to donate old equipment to another department in ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
I have, I have some discussion. Tim had joined us at the meeting and explained that we have our, we got new SCBA's, and we have old ones that still are somewhat functional but could use some repair work. And the Ironton Fire Department thinks they want to take on the task of taking on our old ones, upgrading them, getting them repaired up to service, and then using them. And Tim wants to donate it to them. We were just going to throw them in the garbage. We checked with the city attorney, and he, he was all okay with us donating the equipment given some certain, certain language that we provide, telling them, be sure to get it checked by a professional. Be sure to make sure it's fixed before you start using it and whatnot. So we will be donating them to the Ironton Fire Department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
The next item on the agenda is the authorized promotion of Stephanie Bestel to Administrative Specialist 2. And the motion is to authorize the promotion of Stephanie Bestel to Administrative Specialist 2 at Step 5, $26.86 per hour, effective February 2nd, 2021. And further, to authorize staff to conduct the hiring process to backfill the Administrative Specialist position that will become vacant with the promotion of Stephanie Bestel, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Any further discussion? You have Gabe?
Nope, nope.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please.
Okay, the next item is to consider a tentative agreement for IUOE Street 2021-2022 Union Contract Terms. And the motion is to approve the attached 2021-22 Tentative Agreement Summary between the city and IUOE Local 49 Street Department, and further to adopt the attached resolution setting the IUOE Street Department wages for 2021 through 2022, retroactive to January 1st, and ISO move.
Second.
Perfect. So I think we're going to do these in two steps. Yes?
I, I put them together. If you'd like two separate motions, we can.
Well, resolution, we should vote by roll call. A motion to approve the attached agreement, I think it's just a voice vote. Yes?
Correct. So we could separate it out.
Let's separate it out.
Okay, so I'll go back to the motion to approve the attached 2021-22 Tentative Agreement Summary between the city and IUOE Local 49 Street Department. And ISO move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Gabe, you want to just get the highlights?
Yeah, I'll hit the highlights. This is what we've talked about in plenty of closed sessions in recent weeks. And this is, the union has already voted. They've approved it. It's got a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. It's going to be retroactive back to December 1st, and I think that's the two big points to it.
Any further discussion?
December 1st or January 1st?
January 1st, 2021. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for the first. Please, any further discussion? Hearing none on the approval of the attached agreement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Go ahead with number two.
Okay, the number two is to adopt the attached resolution setting the IUOE Street Department wages for the 2021 and 2022 calendar years, and ISO move.
Second.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The administrator Bergman, we call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item, which is the tentative agreement for IUOE Parks in the 21-22 Union Contract Terms. And the motion is to approve the attached 2021-22 Tentative Agreement Summary between the city and IUOE Local 49 Parks Department, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Any further discussion, Gabe?
Same deal as the agreement, tentative agreement we just approved in the previous motion. And it's a 2.5% cost of living adjustment, retroactive to January 1st. And that's kind of the main point we negotiated.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the attached tentative agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And number two here is to adopt the attached resolution setting IUOE Parks Department wages for 2021-22, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Okay, and the final action we have is the annual review of the investment policy. We reviewed the investment policy, and the motion is to adopt the policy as presented and ISO move.
Second.
You have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Any discussion?
I've got.
Yeah, Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was one change made to the policy, and we, it was just a small change where we had misspelled city as C-O-U-N-T-Y, so we changed that to city.
Well, that is fantastic. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman O'Day, Safety and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Public Works had a two-item agenda. We do not have any action items. There are no motions. Basically, our engineer walked us through more than we've ever learned about sanitary sewer pipes and their replacement.
Walked us through sewers.
Watched some videos, as well as our street and paving, pavement rating system. So if anybody has any questions about that stuff, feel free to ask Paul. Otherwise, end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any questions of Mr. Sandy on the pavements of the sewer? Nope. We will continue on with item eight, which is unfinished resistance. This is 8A. Consider the approval of the planning commission revised terms. Community Development Director Chansky? Say, Chansky? We're combining our. Mr. Chansky, can you please walk us through what you want to do?
Yes, Mr. President. So on, on January 4th came before the city council, the planning commission had requested the city council to consider their, the layout of terms for the planning commission. As it stands right now, there are three terms set to expire on December 31st, 2021, and three terms set to expire on December 31st, 2022. Those are all the appointed terms. The seventh member is the council liaison, and liaison is a voting member. The concern, again, from the planning commission was regarding continuity within the commission with the idea of you could have an entire commission turnover in 12 months, or 24 months. So at that time, there was some request from the council to kind of go back and do a little more research as to maybe how these commissions came about. Is there a method to the madness of having three and three, and then the third year having no one? And then with the recommendation of potentially what to do. We did do include some further research. Stephanie did an awesome job of digging up all the planning commission terms dating back to 1957, stack about this big, and after reviewing that, it came to the conclusion that there is absolutely no discernible method by which the planning commission terms were set, and they vary year by year, it seems like. At one point, the planning commission actually had eight members until about 1980, when one person got off, and it was kept at seven, and there just seems to be no discernible terms when it comes to the planning commission. So with that, staff is recommending the following, and it's looking at the terms expiring in 2021, there are three. Again, these terms are three-year terms, would be upon those three terms expiring, making one term into a, turning one term into a two-year term, set to expire in 1231, 2023, while keeping the others as three-year terms. And then for the three terms that expire on 1231, 2022, make one a one-year term set to expire on 1231 of 2023, keeping the other three as three years. What this would result in is having two commission terms up expire every year. So that is what you see in the recommendation. Mr. President, at this time, I'll take any questions that the council has.
Any questions for David Chansky regarding this?
Good move.
Good move, and that's a motion to approve by Stunek.
Second.
Second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chansky, that's, that's a great idea. Item B is call for applicants. Mr. Mayor, you want to, you want to toot your horn down there?
It's the thing I do best. First of all, turn your microphone on, Kelly. Come on, come on, let's go. We got, we got a guy back here, Sean. He's got a big old sign. He's, he's giving you the mic sign. You got your blinders on. Let's go. Anyways, over here at the mayor's suite.
John, start over.
There we go. Over here at the mayor's suite.
Yeah, this I said.
We have our microphones on. This is a call for applicants. Applications, of course, are available at the city's website, www.ci.braner.mn.us. These are the mayor recommends, terms expiring 1231 of said year. We have the Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2024. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2025. The Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. The Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2022, and the following terms expiring of, excuse me, September 7th of said year, and that is the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2025, and one term expiring 2026. We have been receiving some applications for these, so get your applications in soon because we will be making recommendations on those.
Thank you. And don't forget, you have two council members sitting as at, as non-council people on, one myself on EDA and one Mr. O'Day on Charter Commission, which could be filled as well.
Yes, I do not believe those are included in the notes.
I don't think so either. Thank you. And the city council has one spot open on the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, as well as the Ad Hoc Committee for the Water Tower has two positions available. Item number nine is new business. Item 9A is the consideration of the approval of the conditional use per, permit for the 923 Oak Street Sharing Bread Soup Kitchen. Mr. Chansky, are you going to walk us through this one?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. It's been a while since we had a, a planning commission and a, and a land use permit before you. This is a conditional use permit for 923 Oak Street, which is the Sharing Bread Soup Kitchen. In short, they submitted a CUP to operate as a neighborhood slash community center. The reason this, this came before us is the, they submitted a building permit back in December to add a 12-by-24 walk-in refrigerator freezer that they're going to be using to serve as a community-wide collection hub for excess food from area businesses. At that time, we started to do a review, and we realized that we had a problem here being that, at the time that Sharing Bread moved to their location at 923 Oak Street, they were, they were sharing or using facilities owned by Temple Baptist Church, so they fell under the church's umbrella. In 2015, they bought the church, and in 2016, they tore the church down for a parking lot. When they did that, they made themselves legal non-conforming because they were no longer under the church's umbrella, and the church was an allowable use in that district. They're currently in an R3 high-density residential district. So to remedy this issue, we had them submit a conditional use permit to operate as a neighborhood slash community center, and that came before the planning commission this past month. The planning commission did review this request, and they voted 6-1 to approve the CUP with the condition that the required landscaping is completed in the spring of 2021 with the landscape plan approved by staff. The one dissenting vote was Commissioner Kevin Jaeger. He shared that while he was completely in support of the project, there was, there was a concern regarding the, the noise created from the compressor unit on the cooler, and really was, it's just an unknown. They started to look into the, the applicant brought up some of the specs from the cooler. They had that ready. There was no decibel reading or anything. It's about a two horsepower compressor for this unit. Couldn't find anything. Since then, I actually talked to the applicant today. She's looked, dug more into it and still contacted the manufacturer and can't, still can't seem to get any information regarding the potential noise created by this compressor. So that is why he voted against it. He just felt like he didn't have information, especially considering this is a neighborhood setting. One of the things, the steps that the applicant has already taken as part of this, this would be considered outdoor mechanical, ground-mounted mechanical equipment under the code, and per the code, any ground-mounted mechanical equipment must be screened by screening that has at least at minimum 80% opacity and is at least six inches taller than the unit. The applicant has already started to work with High Tech Construction, who is going to be installing this for them, building, they have to make a concrete pad, install it, hook it up. They're also creating a covered walkway between the building and the cooler, and they've already are proposing kind of a fence-like structure that would actually be almost 100% opacity, and again, it would have to go six feet above the unit. So we're pretty confident that that type of screening would also muffle any potential noise from the compressor unit. So they are doing their best to try to be good neighbors. There was a call-in, a call-in during the public hearing of a neighbor who had a little bit of a complaint. He said when the, when the church, when the Sharing Bread demolished the church back in 16, there was talk about some increased landscaping and that never came to be, obviously, through this conditional use permit. There is requirement for landscaping, so they have to up that, and Shannon, who's the executive director of Sharing Bread, said she and, and one of their board members, Mitch Brinkes, actually walked over there and spoke with the neighbor and talked about the landscaping, and they're going to be presenting kind of him with their concept before they bring it to us. And so I think he said the neighbor was pretty happy with, with that solution, and so we're looking forward to making that site better. Ultimately, their goal is to continue to serve, serve the underprivileged in our community and be good neighbors to the Oak Street neighborhood. With that, Mr. President, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Chansky? Seeing none, the recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit. Is there a motion on this topic?
So move.
Motion by Tad Erickson to approve?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. They are approved. Next up is the consideration of the approval of the variance request for 415 Cedar Street. Mr. Chansky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dennis and Erica Markison, as they submitted a request for variance at 415 Cedar Street, which is their place of residence. They are requesting a variance from Section 515-54-7B, front yard setbacks. The ordinance requires them to have a front yard setback of 20 feet from the property line. They are requesting that that setback be reduced to 18 feet, 4 inches, or one, or be reduced by one, about eight inches, whichever way you want to look at it, for the addition of a covered porch. This is part of an overall remodeling and enhancement project they're going to be doing on their, on their home, including build, uh, doing the front porch, redoing that, creating some cover on it. They're actually going to be almost completely removing the roof of their, of their home to add a second story to it, completely demolishing the garage and porch area, putting on a new garage, and really just making this their, their, truly their forever home. They've lived in it since about 2001, I believe, was built in 1954, and they would like to, they've lived in it for almost 20 years, and they like to live into it for a further 20 years. Upon consideration, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve this variance, citing the staff's findings of fact, which are in your packet, and also adding the finding that the curvature of the lot's front property line also creates a practical difficulty that is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. Mr. President, I'll take any questions the council has.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, the recommendation is to approve the variance. Is there a motion on this topic?
So move.
Motion by Pritchett, second by O'Day. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. We will move on to item 10, and I don't know if we have anybody on the telephones, Sean. That's public forum, which is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Usually, we like to keep it under about three minutes.
One person online?
Yep. Yes, caller, do you have a, or you have something you want to share with the council?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address. If you guys state your name and address first.
Yes, sir. My name is Jeffrey Bipes. I live at 811 Third Avenue Northeast. I would ask the council, what is the city's position on flags, banners, or signs that a resident posts in their yard? More pointedly, what, what is an acceptable display, and what would constitute an unacceptable display?
Thank you, Jeff. I have good news. We have a guy named David Chansky who has memorized all of those rules, and we, and we've adopted those rules as a council, but I don't know if any of us could share those rules at this point in time. Any chance I can get you to call in to David on, after, or David's going to give you some, going to give you a broad overview?
And, Mr. President, I have, I have talked and spoken with Mr. Bipes, and we are working on this project, pro, uh, issue that he has addressed. I have addressed it with the city attorney, and we are working, trying to figure out how to address this, this issue. This does come, fall under the non-commercial speech sign ordinance, so we are working through the process. I don't know, Joe, if you have anything you want to add on this?
Not really. We just need to work, like you said, continue through with that process. We have First Amendment constitutional issues involved.
Sure. Jeff, do you understand the answer?
Yes, I do, and I have spoken with David, and David, was that you that commented there?
Yes, it was David.
Okay, I, I understand that, and I appreciate the input. If you could, David, I left you my phone first. Can you keep me apprised?
Jeff, I can absolutely do that.
And Jeff, if you get, you can always bring back an issue to the council if you want to be on the agenda, but for, you know, questions like this, that's what, staff is here, they work for you. So thanks for calling in.
I understand, Kelly. Thank you, David.
You got it.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else, Sean?
Nope.
Okay, then we will put an end to public forum and go on to staff reports. We'll just go around the room. We'll start with the city administrator Burgman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to meet with the Northside Neighborhood Association along with council president Bevins. They really wanted to know a lot about rental, our rental licensing ordinance, our rental properties. Was hopeful that David would be in attendance, but that meeting happened to be at the same time as we had a planning commission meeting, but it was a really great opportunity to touch base with some of our, our Northside residents. Also had a meeting with the downtown, Destination Downtown Brainerd Coalition to start discussing the, the appropriation of $15,000 from the EDA for a position. They're working on a job description, so there will be more information to come before the EDA. The other thing, just wanted to share, or maybe Alderman Pritchett would like to, just about the, the library. I got an email from Jenny Hill, just letting, wanting to inform the council that they're going to continue with curbside service only at this point, wanted us to remind people that they offer curbside appointments Monday through Saturday and three evenings until 7:00 PM, that almost all of their services are online, including printouts of internet documents. The building will remain closed for now, but they will be revisiting the decision to possibly open up at the February library board meeting, and I don't know, Alderman Pritchett?
Yeah, that pretty much covers it. We're just looking, seeing what other libraries are doing and, and, you know, some of the guidelines that way.
And then my last item is, I, I think I had mentioned, I've attended almost every board or commission meeting with the exception of the library board and the airport commission. So I'm attending the airport commission meeting this Thursday morning and really looking forward to it, and I will be there with Alderman Stunek, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Burgman. HR Director Schubert, anything you want to add?
Just quickly, we have noticed that there is an issue with our employee policy manuals regarding step advancements for new employees. This specifically only really addresses or affects our department heads and city administrator This specifically only really addresses or affects our department heads and, um, city administrator and non-union supervisors. So it's for new employees. We're going to be talking about that at the next meeting. I just wanted to give you a heads up about that.
Thank you. Chris, uh, Finance Director Hillman?
Do, um, so the League of Minnesota Cities, we, or I mean, sorry, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities sent out an email today that they're highlighting, um, a new, they're highlighting top legislative activities each week in the month of February, and this week is highlighting L G A. And so they're asking for people to get informed or to get involved and to inform their senators that we need it to be paid in full and on time. Um, they did give a sample resolution, which obviously we couldn't get in the packet since we got the email today. Um, but I guess if we have a letter or send a resolution to our, our senators, our representatives, saying the importance of it being paid, um, that would be good. Or if we can bring it back to the resolution at the next council meeting for council to approve that we can pass on. It'll be after the week they highlighted, but I still think it's important that we support this effort and, and, um, it works. So that'd probably be the best thing is just to wait until next meeting to pass the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Engineer Sandy?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, uh, this last week, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, the City Engineers Association Annual Conference. It was a three-day virtual conference in which I was able to, um, get most of my C E U's taken care of for my, uh, P E licensure. And, uh, during that time, I was elected as vice president of the organization. Um, and so I'm going to have some opportunities to do some traveling here in the next, uh, two years. Uh, vice president this year and president next year. So, um, I'll be looking to the council for support and doing some national conferences and things during that time, uh, COVID pending. So just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congrats. Thank you. Community Development Director Chansky?
Uh, Mr. President, the only thing I have to share that I didn't cover in my presentation earlier um, is that the first of the I S D one-eighty-one school projects is officially coming to a close. I was informed lastly, last week from, by Scott Siduski, who's been the, uh, inspector on that, doing our delegation agreement, um, that Harrison Elementary is ready to receive its certificate of occupancy. So one down.
Thank you very much. Attorney Langill, anything to add?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Sean Strong from the I T Department, nothing to add? Anything?
Just Mike.
I, I actually thought that was something else. Thought he was referring to my ethnicity. Online, we've got H R Director Sharpe here. Anything to add?
Nothing at this time.
From the Police Department, Mike Bastow, Acting Chief?
Mr. President, I have nothing to add.
Sean Magnussen? No. Scott Magnussen, thank you. I was combining two of you. No. Tim Holmes from the Fire Department?
No, nothing to add.
All right. Did I miss anybody? Okay, that's the end of our staff reports. Uh, Mayor's Report, Mayor Bedeau.
Oh, the time has come, of course. Uh, a couple of things to touch on super fast. The River to Rails group, uh, will be meeting on Wednesday of this week. That group has been touching base once every two months and just, uh, coming together to keep that momentum going on that. It's been very good. If there's anything that you would like me to bring up at that meeting, please let me know, uh, so we can do so. I believe Jennifer will probably be there, uh, and more than likely David Chansky as well. So, uh, very well represented by the city. Uh, Parking Commission, uh, David mentioned that we will be holding a workshop on Thursday. Uh, what happened at our last meeting was that group decided that they want to, uh, kind of step out and come at it from a really organic step and, uh, sit down and just talk about what the goals are, where we want to be, what, uh, the vision is from that. And instead of doing it in a very formal setting via Zoom, they wanted to get in around a table and have a good discussion about that. So that group is moving very quickly. Uh, I just wanted to touch base super fast. Uh, the children of our area will, the older ones will be moving back into school and, uh, Mr. Pritchett can obviously speak to that as well. Um, but as that's happening, I just want to, um, uh, give the, the teachers and the administration there a pat on the back for all the hard work they've done. I know they've been working hard to get those kids back into the school. And, uh, my son is one of the kids that needs to get his butt back in the school. My daughter, perfectly fine. I signed off on her doing, uh, virtual for the rest of the year. My son, holy crap, get that kid back in the school. Uh, the Park Board, lastly, um, had its first meeting with, uh, our new setup and with the Public Works Department. Um, and I just wanted to really, uh, say thank you to the council and to, uh, City Engineer, uh, Paul Sandy, uh, slash, uh, interim Public Works Director. They had a hundred and sixteen-page, uh, agenda, which is the longest agenda I've seen in Park Board history in my four years. And they flew through it. Uh, that is a department that I will just say right now is, uh, headed in really, really positive direction. And I am excited to be a part of that. So, uh, again, if you have anything that you want to see happen with that group, uh, let me know so we can get that in front of them. That is a group that is looking at things top to bottom and trying to find ways of improving the little things first in our city. So, super excited. So I just wanted to tell them all congratulations and thank you for, uh, the movement that we've had. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council, uh, member reports. Tad Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Northland Arboretum Board of Directors met this past Thursday. Uh, took a, took a look at year-end financials. Um, Haunted Trails was up thirteen thousand over last year. Uh, membership is up, uh, in terms of dollars, up three thousand over last year. Great news. Um, they had a strategic planning workshop on the twenty-sixth. Um, they're working on drafting a new vision, new mission statement. Uh, Fire Advisory Board, uh, next meeting is February twenty-third. Uh, plan to attend that. Uh, Planning Commission Workshop is scheduled for next, uh, this, I'm sorry, two days from now, uh, the, the third. And as far as the high points from that, we took action on, on items from the planning commission. So, end of report.
Thank you. Dave Pritchett?
Um, you know, uh, City Administrator Bergman covered mostly from the library, uh, board, but the one thing to realize is, okay, we're going to be addressing that at our next meeting, which is the last Wednesday of the month. But staff has been directed to look to see if there are opportunities to open early. And if they find something that we should discuss, we will be having a special meeting. And so we're hoping to be able to expand services when it will be a benefit to all of, everybody in a safe manner. Um, as far as return back to school, we're looking at the sixteenth, so our next council meeting, well, I'll probably be dead tired, um, and maybe not able to talk. But hopefully, if everything goes as planned, we're going to be starting back, just so people know, it'll be the hybrid first, at least for the older kids, and kind of go from there and then keep our fingers crossed. And so just remember when we're doing that distance learning, it's communication and confirmation before combustion. All right? It's, so, you know, always inquiry, you know, inquire first before you do your inquisition. All right? That's it.
Thanks, Mr. Pritchett. Uh, S P N W Chair Michael Day?
Yeah, um, I guess I just wanted to say thanks to, uh, Mr. Sandy for taking the committee members of, uh, Safety and Public Works out to the Streets Department building. Uh, we got to see the, the equipment that they have, what they need, um, and see the, the project before it gets started. Um, hopefully sometime this summer or fall. Um, so, very interesting, uh, kind of a slow time of year for us right now, but moving along.
Wait till it snows.
Right.
All right. Tiffany Stingline?
Uh, nothing worth slowing us down.
Thank you. Kevin Stunek?
Oh, I've, I've got a lot today. As you, as you all know, I'm a, I'm a whiz on the computer. That said, I want to shout out a big thank you to Sean because he helped me this morning, or I was going to rip it in half. Thank you.
No, you can do that. They do come apart.
P N F Chair Gabe Johnson?
Okay, I have a lot. Apologies in advance, Chair Bevins. I'm going to start with the one that just popped up. Harrison is by no means even close to being done. We passed a conditional use permit where they would have boulevard trees out in front of the school. They came back and said, but we don't want to. And we said, no, you have to. They still have it. And there were not, I don't think we should sign off on anything being done until they have the trees in the conditional use permit as a condition for their permit that they agreed to in the grant. But that's, that's my opinion. Perhaps you guys want to change the conditional use permanent, we permit. We unanimously approved twice already. But I wouldn't sign off on anything final until we make sure that they delivered what they promised they were going to deliver. On a lighter note, the Brainer J C's, the, uh, hosts of the annual largest ice fishing contest on earth this year, had their event, did not hold it in person due to circumstances, but they decided to hold it virtually. And they had over four thousand seven hundred people compete across the state of Minnesota. So now the Brainer J C's are the hosts of the largest ice fishing contest in the world and the hosts of the largest virtual fishing contest in the world. So, good job, Brainer J C's. Thank you for that. Thank you to all the J C volunteers who are still reviewing tens of thousands of pictures that were uploaded of fish. And hopefully they can get that done tonight or tomorrow to have some final results out. I want to thank the city council and the mayor. Everybody got their reviews in. Everybody filled them out completely or as, as complete as they were comfortable filling them out. So good job on that. And finally, we had an H R A meeting and I was elected chair of the H R A Commission this year. So if you have any ideas about housing, bring them to me. Any ideas about redevelopment, bring them to me. Any ideas about authority, bring them to me. I'll run them by Eric Sharpe in here. We'll see if we can't get them on an agenda over there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Uh, and myself, just two quick things. One is, on the curbside library pickup, I used it twice in the last week. It works really slick. So one was a book that we had and the other was one that came from the Anoka Library through MinLink. I had to have a little help, um, from one of the librarians, but it still worked very slick and the curbside pickup is, is excellent. Uh, second, I, I just, I, I can't resist, as Jennifer Bergman said, we were, uh, both online with the Northside Residents Association. And I mentioned to S P N W that the two-block stretch from Washington Street to, uh, Gregory Park is on the schedule for this year. And, uh, that should be exciting if you're, if you're, i- i- if you have thoughts on that two-block stretch. I know, uh, in the past, a lot of people have had thoughts. And that is the end of my report. We are now going to, uh, we have four closed sessions, if you're watching on Zoom. And we're going to motion into one, come back, go into two, come back, go into three, come back, go into four. And for all of those, we won't be on, correct, Sean?
Correct.
Yep, we won't be on Zoom, but we will. What's that?
We will be on Zoom.
Well, it won't be on YouTube. So if you're watching on YouTube, I apologize. When we come back after the four, will we, will we go out? Will we adjourn on YouTube or not?
I'd rather not.
So we won't. So this is, if you're watching on YouTube.
I'd be annoyed.
This is, this is the end of the council meeting. So the first one is we're going to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes. Uh, you know what? I'm just going to just announce before we go off YouTube what all four of these are. The first one is a litigation on Tom's backhoe. The second one is to consider counteroffers for purchase of property at a five-oh-two Jackson Street. The third one is to discuss labor negotiation strategy. And the fourth one is to conduct the city administrator performance review. So those are the four closed sessions this evening. Uh, we are now looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes one-three-D-point-zero-five subdivision three-B. Motion. For attorney-client privilege to discuss Tom's backhoe service, Inc. versus the city of Brainard pending litigation. We have a move by O'Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will move, we will move into closed session. And if you don't.